We're like left-handed.
Yeah.
We're like left-handed. Okay, so we'll just wait till... Are we ready to go? Good? Okay. Hi, good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Caldwell, West Caldwell Board of Education meeting happening today, Monday, April 17th, at approximately 7:03 PM. Tonight, the board met in the superintendent's office at 6 o'clock PM for a private executive session. The purpose of that meeting was to discuss personnel litigation, miscellaneous, and old business matters. That meeting was advertised and is in compliance with the Open Public Meeting Act and NJSA 10:4-6, also known as the Sunshine Law. The matters discussed will be made public when confidentiality is no longer required, and formal action pursuant to said discussion shall take place only at a meeting to which the public has been invited. Tonight's meeting will be livestreamed, and all community questions and comments will be welcomed here in person at the Harrison School conference room. The Caldwell, West Caldwell Board of Education public conference meeting is in compliance as well with the Open Public Meetings Act and NJSA 10:4-6, also known as the Sunshine Law. Notices have been sent to the Progress, Caldwell, New Jersey, the Star Ledger, Newark, New Jersey, and Tap into West Essex. Notices have also been posted at the Board of Education Business Office, located here in the Harrison School Building, 104 Gray Street, West Caldwell, New Jersey, and have been delivered to the clerks in the borough of Caldwell and the township of West Caldwell for posting. Brian, can you please take the role?
Yes. Student Representative Claire Kiernan.
Here.
Ms. DiMartini.
Here.
Mr. Elko.
Here.
Ms. Mack.
Here.
Mr. D'ambola.
Here.
Ms. Grosso.
Here.
So five voting members present. We have a quorum.
Great. Can everyone please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Are there any communications for the board, Brian?
None.
Okay, great. So we have a nice full house tonight. Thank you, everyone who's here and coming, and I'm going to turn it over to the superintendent.
Thank you, Board President. If I could have Lily Pham from the House of Integrity and Joshua Johnson from the House of Knowledge to come up to the podium and give us a little update on what's happening at the middle school?
Good evening, Dr. Conklin and the Board of Education. Thank you for having us. I am Josh from the House of Knowledge.
Emily from the House of Integrity. We had a very busy month at GCMS. On Thursday, April 6th, GCMS hosted Make a Difference Day. Students had opportunities to complete service projects for the Mount Pleasant Animal Shelter, St. John's Soup Kitchen, and the Safe House. They heard from keynote speaker, Michaela Romero, who participates in the Army Reserves. Students also traveled to different rooms and learned from numerous speakers who all make a difference in their communities through various nonprofit organizations. Some of these organizations include the NJ Sharing Network, the Seeing Eye Dogs, the Special Olympics, and the JV Fund. And many of our local leaders in both Caldwell and West Caldwell spent the day with us, including board members, Mrs. Grosso, Mrs. Greenly, and Mr. Elko. This day was created by previous principal, Mr. Brown, in order to inspire students to make a difference in our community. This can be seen every day in GCMS by our eighth graders in service leadership classes. This is a cycle class which eighth graders are required to complete nine hours of service individually or in a small group and complete a class service project. Overall, the idea of giving back and being selfless is implemented to students all throughout the middle school career. And Make a Difference Day is a perfect example of the morals taught to GCMS students.
Here are some other past and upcoming events that are happening in school. On March 24th during seventh period, all students participated in an escape room that could earn their house points. All students were placed in a classroom with their fellow house members to be the first to reach the objective. The objective of the escape room was to answer questions about our principal, Mr. Bertolo, to find where he was being held hostage and try to save him. Questions consisted of things like, who was Mr. Bertolo's favorite Yankee growing up? And how many Yankee games has Mr. Bertolo attended? This escape room was very entertaining and surprising and gave the students of GCMS a break and experienced them to have fun. An upcoming event in our school our school will have is called the Academic Bowl. Basically, the Academic Bowl is when the houses compete against each other to see who has the most knowledge. Students will be placed in a classroom and answer questions about different topics. The two best scoring kids from each house will be admitted and go onstage in the auditorium for the finals at the end of the day. This is a very competitive event that students are very excited for.
The Life Skills Class at GCMS continues to work on project-based learning activities while exploring the community. On St. Patrick's Day, they receive a tour of the Caldwell Post Office, learning about the services available and the job responsibilities of postal workers. Recently, Mrs. Cook's class also invited Chief George Ritchie of the Bloomfield Police Department and Mr. Maro Tucci to participate in a digital meeting to ask questions and learn about the Constitution applies to their everyday lives. Boom 209's classroom continues to produce a large amount of clean oxygen and is beginning to look like a beautiful garden with their continuation and participation of the Horticulture Club in West Caldwell Library, making all things grow. Finally, the Life Skills Class created custom gift tags and cards for recycling items by recycling items and donated them in memory of Dr. Hugh, previous art teacher of the district. A portion of the profits from the sold items were donated to the Special Olympics and for donations Make a Difference Day.
On March 29th, we had an advisory day. Our seventh and eighth graders participated in a lesson on mental health awareness. We learned about depression and the coping skills we can use to manage our feelings. The sixth grader's lesson was on integrity. All students also watched a promo video on Make a Difference Day 2023 and had a discussion on how this thing came about. This Wednesday, April 19th, is our next advisory day. We will all participate in a lesson for autism awareness and showing kindness. Play Unified. On March 30th, the Play Unified Club hosted a paint and chips event. Students had a step-by-step painting tutorial with our art teacher, Mrs. Morrissey. Students drew and painted a Mickey Mouse portrait while snacking on chips and socializing with their peers. It was a great turnout, and the students did an amazing job. Builders Club. The Builders Club held an autism acceptance T-shirt sale district-wide. Both the Builders Club and the students in the LD class helped organize the sale and the distribution of the T-shirts to all the schools. Thank you to all who support the sale.
Thank you, Dr. Conklin, and the Board for your time and continued support. Does anyone have any questions?
I just, I do. What was your favorite presentation from Make a Difference Day from each of you?
I'll go first. It's probably the one where it was like, she was talking about like how you could like play sports and like do other things with like disabilities. So we did like different activities to like, kind of like, I guess, like see how it would be, I guess.
Yeah, yeah.
I like the Special Olympics presentation with Josh because we got to do the activities and learn about how we can include others, too.
Awesome, awesome. That's great. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
If I could invite Coach Sipper up to the podium? Coach, forgive me if I pontificate on you too much, but you were in our junior program in the 1980s and then drafted to high school in 1995. And you continue in your wrestling career at College of New Jersey, is that correct?
That's correct.
And you came back here, and you decided to volunteer, and you've been here for over a decade. So we thank you for your dedication to Caldwell West Caldwell. And now you're the coach of the middle school travel team and also support our JV and varsity teams at the high school. And we asked you here tonight to talk about some of the great elementary and middle school kids you've been coaching.
Great.
If you could talk about them, that'd be great.
Yeah, absolutely. So first, Dr. Conklin and the board, thank you for having me and the rest of the team. You know, we've had a great partnership over the years and it's helped get us facilities, so we really appreciate that. Caldwell has a strong reputation in the state of New Jersey for wrestling. We have a deep network of relationships through our alumni. And, you know, it's very helpful in getting competition and, you know, helping these kids get exposure. Many of our wrestlers compete at the college levels. We have five Caldwell wrestler, high school wrestlers, competing in college today. And our very own James Haas's son made it to the blood round of his division to get on the podium for an All-American. So he was very close to getting that, but that was pretty fun, kind of following that. I mentioned James Haas. You know, he's one of the alumni that came through the program, and he's a tremendous contributor to the program and to the community. You know, others that came through the program, such as Sean Romano. He's the high school coach today. And again, you know, really supports the program. And there's many others. So as Dr. Conklin mentioned myself, I came through the program. You know, I have three boys. They participated in the program in some fashion. Some were, you know, more competitive than others, you know, in it. But, you know, they all enjoyed their time doing it. From eighth grade and under, we have around 100 kids in the program. And so what I'll mention is, you know, I heard the middle school students mention about kind of, you know, inclusiveness and being able to participate, whether they were handicapped or not. But, you know, wrestling is probably the most inclusive sport there is available in addition to your typical diversity metrics. Whether you're handicapped, there's wrestlers with one leg. There's wrestlers that are blind. There's wrestlers that are tall, skinny, heavy, light. So it is very inclusive. Additionally, it offers all levels, whether you're novice or advanced. There's competition for all, and we make sure that our kids can find that level of competition that's appropriate for them. So again, you know, these kids, you know, whether they win or lose, you know, we always tell them that a W stands for win, the L stands for learn. And we always push them to the hardest competitions so they can continue to improve. And, you know, these kids do not shy away from competition at all. And that's what makes them, you know, why they're here today and why they're being recognized. So we have eight students here, student athletes here today. So I'll call them up first. Nico Lassenden. Nico was last year's New Jersey state champion, so for his division. And once in every, say, 10 years or so, you know, Caldwell may produce a state champion. So it's a very rare occurrence. So, you know, kid is, and the best thing about him, he's always smiling, you know, when he's wrestling. Right now, he's not smiling. He's a little nervous, but... And his brother Vincent. Vincent Lassenden. Vincent is a fourth grader, and he's one of the toughest kids in our room. You know, one thing you could say about Vincent is you'll get 100% effort from him. And, you know, this year in the States, he lost early, but, and sometimes it's harder to battle back. He battled back. I think he had to win six matches to want a place in third, so very impressive.
Lucas Mission.
So Lucas, I've known his uncle since his uncle was a baby. His uncle was a former Caldwell wrestler. Trying to get him to move back to town and bring his children here. So hopefully, that'll happen soon. But Lucas is one of our most technical wrestlers in the room at such a young age. Very coachable, loves asking questions. Though, you know, for me, it's, you know, tell him to stop, but, you know, maybe just keep asking the question. So you're learning. Abby Barrett. So Abby is the only girl on our tri-county team. She's been with us since she was in second grade. And, you know, being the only girl hasn't dissuaded her from, you know, being one of the toughest in the room. And every year, it gets harder and harder to find, you know, kids in the room that can compete with her. You know, so she's continuing to improve. And I know she keeps wrestling outside of the season. And all the kids I'm going to mention, you know, the only, the reason for their success is not only just, you know, the work they put in during the season, it's the work they put in year-round. Anthony Barrett. So Anthony is one of the reasons, one of the several reasons, you know, that came back and decided to continue coaching. I coached Anthony again since he was in second grade. And, you know, he started with jiu-jitsu experience as another one of our wrestlers have. And, you know, it's a challenge for a coach because jiu-jitsu, you want to be on your back. In wrestling, you don't want to be on your back. So the most critical development came in the COVID year. You know, we had to travel to find competition, competition that you had to kind of, you know, be with so that you're with the same people. And they were kind of locked together. But he wound up going against some of the top highly recruited eighth graders, and some of them were repeat eighth graders, so maybe three years older than you, Anthony. And, but, you know, he hung in there and, you know, never quit attitude is why, you know, he's having this success. Coach Romano is going to be excited to have you next year. Michael Rankin. So Michael's one of our most serious wrestlers in the room and, you know, does not tolerate any fooling around or any distractions. He's there to wrestle and make sure that, you know, he gets his money's worth. And, you know, he certainly has. You know, I've seen Michael compete against kids that are the top in the state. And, you know, he was challenged against them, and, you know, they beat him pretty good. But now, those matches are one-point matches and, you know, and they could go either way. So he's going to be one of the top kids. He's already the top kid, one of the top kids in the state. But he's going to be, you know, somebody that, when they come to Caldwell, they're going to know, you know, they're wrestling Michael Rankin. Luke Riker. Luke is another one of our mixed martial arts guy that loves jiu-jitsu. So again, another challenge for a wrestling coach. And he's still interested in jiu-jitsu, I know. But, you know, from a wrestling perspective, Luke has excelled tremendously. You know, he puts the time in year in and year round and, you know, always struggling to break into the podium. And this year, he did it. So, you know, I can confidently say Luke is among the best in New Jersey right now. So Luke, continue to build upon that success. Those are the Caldwell wrestlers that made it to the States. And four of them, Luke, Mike, Vincent, and Abby, all placed in the States. So round of applause for them.
So we're going to take a quick, if you guys could stay there, we'll take a quick picture, and then we'll take a walk with our students. One more. Okay. Stay out there.
So Christian Stocker. He's been with us since second grade. So Christian, and probably why I forgot him, I shouldn't forget him because I've known him forever, right? He participates in the Scorpion School of Academy, which is housed in Fairfield. And it's a school of both education and athletics strictly for wrestlers. So Christian will be joining the high school team next year. Again, he's, you know, one of the top in the state. So I think another one of, you know, Coach Romano's gains. So next year, Caldwell High School is going to be, you know, they made it to the state sectional finals this year. They have a chance of breaking into the top 20 next year. So it's going to be, you know, very exciting and to see Christian part of that.
I mean, they're all everywhere, whether it's a high school match, whether it's the little ones, whether it's the middle schools. They're all everywhere, and there's various parent volunteers jumping in. And I've never seen a group of guys more dedicated to a sport and to really encouraging children than this group. So I think we are all blessed as a community to have all of you involved in this sport. So thank you.
We have some more.
Yeah, we have more stuff going on.
That's for sure.
Everyone, hang on to your seats. We're just getting started.
So I invited Mr. Lincoln up to talk a little bit about our Wilson kids that do gymnastics, right?
Yeah. We have two really impressive people to talk about this evening. Every now and again during recess, when I'm kind of walking across the blacktop, out of the corner of my eye, I'll see like a pair of legs flip over or like somebody kind of doing some kind of spin or something like that. And after I have a heart attack, I realize it's probably one of these two young ladies. But again, it's an incredible achievement. There's gymnastics takes a tremendous amount of discipline, commitment. So to be doing this at such a young age is really quite an achievement. So I'd like to acknowledge that. Both of these young folks participate, or they are a part of the USA Twisters team. And they recently competed at the state level. Our first person I'd like to acknowledge tonight is Rachel Bishop, one of our third graders. Rachel took third in her age group. And the other person I'd like to acknowledge would be Sarah Marriott, one of our fourth graders. Sarah finished fifth overall in her age group. And if I'm not mistaken, your team won states this year, right? Which meant that both of these young people were able to come to school in a limousine one day, which I thought was pretty awesome. So thank you, guys, for your hard work. Keep it up, and don't quit on it. Keep doing it, all right? Thank you.
Okay. If the girls want to stand tight, Mr. Lincoln, if you want to come, we'll take a quick picture.
And last, and certainly not least, I'd like Mr. Lincoln and Mr. Gare to come up to the microphone. I got to attend the second, my personal second Geography B. I don't know what number this is, but it's the second time I got to go to one. And watch the kids basically make me feel silly about how much I don't know about places in the world for a half an hour. So it was a great experience to watch them and watch them compete. We do have three winners here, four winners here tonight. And if I could ask Mr. Gare and Mr. Lincoln to introduce their winners and have them come up?
Yeah. I'm going to start third to third to first.
I just want to say one thing about the history of the Geography B, Dr. Conklin, and members of the board. Thank you for having us. So I believe, Dr. Conklin, this is about the eighth or ninth district-wide elementary Geography B that we've had. And it started because of a student at Wilson School who's now a senior at James Caldwell High School, Joshua Scott. I asked Josh to come tonight, and he had a prior engagement, so he couldn't attend. But Josh used to pester Mr. Kena, the former principal at Wilson School, about having a Geography B to the point where he broke down Mr. Kena and decided to run one at Wilson School. And then he said, "Let's get bigger, and let's go compete against the other schools across the district." So like I said, I think this is about year eight or nine of the district-wide B, and Josh is now a senior. So while he's not here tonight, I'd like to just give him a round of applause for starting this great tradition. Josh is off to college in the fall. So thanks, Josh. I'll start. I'm going to call second place. It's kind of out of order here. But my student Dante Bossia is here. He's our second-place elementary Geography B. Place finisher. He came in first place last year as a fourth grader. Dante, come on up and congratulations.
Mr. Gare, it's no big deal, but Wilson School had two finishers in the top three.
I just want to interject. It was held at Wilson School, so it was still the best.
There was no home cooking, I promise. In third place, James Dyer. If you want to come on up, James. This is James' second finish in the top three, I think much like Mr. Bossia as well. And in first place, Mr. Luke LaRrequente. Congratulations, guys. Really well done.
That concludes my report.
Okay. That was a good one. Before we move on, I just want to say too, because I know we're being livestreamed, that if anyone ever wants their child to be recognized, you know, when we have children come up, it's usually because a parent has reached out, a coach has reached out. And we're happy to sit here for two hours and recognize our children and our students. So if you feel like, oh, my goodness, like my child also won, and she was also on the USA Twisters team and wasn't here tonight, please, like email Dr. Conklin, copy the board. Like, we're happy to come here and celebrate kids. Like, this is the positive stuff that we love to do and we want to do as a community. So we will never, ever, ever care about staying here for hours to celebrate our kids. So again, if your child was a right or you have something exciting you want your child to done and you're proud of the achievement, like, please contact Dr. Conklin. We're kind of trying to work out a system to do it a little more organized next year, like fall sports, spring sports at the high school. So not every board meeting is like a high school sports celebration. But we're working on that. But just wanted to put that out there, okay? Okay, so president's report, committee. Um, okay, so president's report, committee, do we have any committee reports tonight? None, none, no curriculum. Okay. Uh, approval of minutes, right, Brian? Will we approve the minutes tonight or we'll do it next week?
Not, not tonight, next week.
Next week? Okay, so then we're only really voting on, before we vote, let's do a public comment on agenda items, okay? So let me start by saying, right now, we're going to do public comments on agenda items only. Public participation shall be governed by the following. Participant must be recognized by the presiding officer and must preface comments by an announcement of their name and address. Statements are to be limited to three minutes duration and may only address items on the agenda at this point in the meeting. Participant may speak no more than once on the same topic until all others who wish to speak on that topic have been heard and all statements shall be directed to the presiding officer. Boards use the public comment period of the meeting as an opportunity to listen to citizen concerns, but not to debate issues or enter into question and answer session or cross-examination between the public and individual members. Be aware that not all issues brought before the board meeting will be resolved this evening. Boards may respond to public comment by seeking additional information or by delegating the authority to investigate the issue to the superintendent or his designate. The presiding officer may interrupt, warn, and/or terminate a participant's comments if it exceeds the allotted time or is objectively obscene. Participants may be civilly liable for any obscene, defamatory, or slanderous statements made during public comment. That being said, does anyone want to get up right now about anything on the agenda? Okay, so tonight, we're just going to have, we're just voting on one thing in curriculum and technology. Everything else will be voted on next Monday evening, April 24th, at the voting meeting. Okay, so I'm going to turn it over to curriculum and technology. Danielle, please.
Motion to approve letter A under curriculum and technology.
And do I have a second?
A second.
Brian, will you take the roll, please?
Yes. Uh, Ms. DiMartini.
Yes.
Mr. Elko.
Yes.
Ms. Mack.
Yes.
Mr. Diambola.
Yes.
Ms. Grosso.
Um, yes, but I abstain from 368, please.
Okay, uh, five yeses, uh, one abstain for number 368, motion carried.
Okay, and now we're going to move on to, um, public comments on anything outside of the agenda. To stay uniform, I'm going to read my whole spiel again. Uh, again, to just remind everyone, public participation shall be governed by the following. Participant must be recognized by the presiding officer and must preface comments by an announcement of their name and address. Statements are to be limited to three minutes duration. Participant may speak no more than once on the same topic until all others who wish to speak on that topic have be heard, have been heard and all statements shall be directed to the presiding officer. Again, boards use the public comment period of the meeting as an opportunity to listen to citizen concerns, but not to debate issues or enter into a question and answer session or cross-examination. Be aware that not all issues brought before the board will be resolved this evening. Boards may respond to public comment by seeking additional information or by delegating authority to investigate the issue to the superintendent or his designate. The presiding officer may interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant's comments if it exceeds the allotted time or is objectively obscene. Participants may be civilly liable for any obscene, defamatory, or slanderous comments made during public comment. So does anyone have anything off of the agenda this evening they'd like to address? Okay, great. Before, uh, we make a motion to go back into executive session and end the meeting, I want to remind everyone, next Monday evening, April 24th, is our voting meeting, we'll vote on items on the agenda. May 8th, I'm correct, right? That's our next board meeting, May 8th?
Following that.
Is following that, is the budget presentation, okay? I can't say it enough, that's where our board and, uh, business administrator will present the budget, so I just want to keep saying that to make sure that everybody has an opportunity to attend the May 8th meeting. That's where the budget presentation will happen and the budget will be voted on, okay? So, go ahead, Liz, come on up.
Hi, Liz Hart, 149 Ravine Ave. Um, so the budget is presented on May 8th, you said? Okay, so is there like a pre-read of the budget that the community is available to? Hi.
Yes, actually, so the, the budget is being advertised, uh, in the, um, progress, I believe, this Thursday.
Okay.
All right, in the budget advertisement, there is a notice that the public is allowed to, um, to view the budget prior to the budget hearing and adoption.
Okay.
So I think, I think it's nine o'clock to three o'clock, if you want to come here, you, we can sit down and discuss and I can show you what we have in the budget.
Okay, but it's not.
For yourself or anyone.
And it's, but it's not in, it's not on the website yet though, right?
Uh, it is not.
Okay. And would it be there on Thursday or it's only in person?
No, not until we, until we, until we vote on it.
Got it.
And then after we vote on it, we'll also have the, the user-friendly budget will be posted as well.
Right.
So you do have an opportunity through that process.
Perfect, thanks.
So Brian, I just want to clarify too, so this Thursday, they'll be able, the public can come and view the budget?
Yes, yes.
It's going to be advertised in the progress and then this.
Yes, and in the advertisement, it, it states that if you have questions or you want to see the budget, um, you can come to the business office.
Anytime?
In the building here, I put nine o'clock to three o'clock, so it's a, a window there and we can.
But Brian, is it any day of the week they can come between nine and three to view it between then and May 8th?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to make that clear because I, I didn't get that.
Yeah, no, I didn't either. Okay, cool.
I'm sorry.
No, no problem.
Between now and the time we vote on it, yes.
Okay. Yeah, so I'm just going to say that one more time too, just for anybody else, just,
you know. So the budget's going to be advertised in the progress this Thursday and then between Thursday and the voting budget meeting on May 8th, you can make an appointment with Mr. McCarthy, the business administrator, to come in person, Harrison Building, 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM to view the budget.
That's correct.
Okay.
Good, thank you.
Great. Okay, so that being said, do I have a motion to exit public session and enter into executive session in the superintendent's office at approximately, let's get the time, 7:37 PM?
I'll make that motion.
Good, and can I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, Brian, you take the roll.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All against, uh, no, abstentions? Motion carried.
Great, thank you. Thank you, everyone, for coming, we'll see you next Monday.